This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Today's Wednesday, September 23rd, 2024. This is the zoning board appeals with the city of East Hampton. We have three cases on the agenda for this evening. We have Michael Finacy seeking a, or Michelle Finacy, I'm sorry, speaking a special permit for a large home occupation. We have Alexis Jose Abbott and Sean Abbott seeking a special permit to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming garage and install a smaller shed. And we have the state Stepler Crossing concerning the installation of multifamily sidewalks in a multifamily housing area. With that in mind, is there anyone else who has anything to say that is not concerning the three items that are on the agenda for the evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Kathy Wazinski, Overlook Drive. I wanted to just...
Is the microphone on?
Um, green lights on.
Green lights on. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. You might want to speak a little bit just to make sure you're picked out by the camera though, just to be safe.
So I wanted to express my frustration with last week's public hearing regarding the 385 Main Street project. The process that the board utilized did not take advantage of the time allowed in the 40B process for a full technical review. The board did not seriously take the concerns of the abutters or the community members into consideration. And in fact, the developer was allowed to talk over and interrupt community members when they were speaking. And that was really inappropriate and undermined the intent of the public hearing process. The 40B process allows for 180 days of public hearing from the time it opens until the time it closes, and we barely used 80 of those. And then after the public hearing closes, there's 40 days for the comprehensive permit to be reviewed by the board. That wasn't done. It could have been done after last week's meeting, and we could have allowed for a much broader public hearing, allowing for a review of the design deficiencies in that project. The fact that there are violations of our stormwater regulations in the design and no clear, clearly developed plan for the sewer management is really disappointing and does not protect the city. And that whole process was frustrating, and I hope that we don't see a repeat of that for other developments. Thank you.
Does anyone else who has anything to say?
We have one person online here. Nate was the name.
And you said Nate, if you were looking to speak to just general something not on the agenda, go ahead and raise your hand.
All right. So at this time, do we have any administrative items that you need to address?
Yes, give you folks an update. So the decision right now, it has gone to both the applicant's attorney and the MHPR attorney for review for the language based on what you folks discussed at the last meeting. So they're gonna do all that. Once that's all set, it will then finally come to you folks for review. If you all like that, you'll be able to either come in and sign off or authorize me to sign off on your behalf. If there's any issues with the wording of the language, you can send that back. And this is, we're now kind of in that process of reviewing the decision, make sure that everything looks like right. So that's where we're at now. Then, after we've kind of gone through all this, I think at our next meeting, I'm gonna try to see if I can finally get caught up on minutes for the year because I owe you guys a couple of them. So that's where we're at.
All right. All right. So at this point, we will open the public hearing for Michelle Finacy, applicant who is seeking a special permit for a major home occupation to operate a hair salon out of their home in accordance with section 10.4 of the zoning ordinance. The 1.26 acre parcel is located at 84 North Hampton Street and in an R15 zoning district. Is there anyone here to speak concerning that case? You're here.
We're here.
You're here.
I live next door, so I'm...
All right. Well, if you could come up and explain what you have in mind.
I'm not very good at public speaking, so...
That's okay.
Basically, what I want to do is it's just a private business out of, a private hair salon out of my house. It's literally right through the front door. It's just 156 square feet of my 1,150 square feet home. I will have one to two cars or clients per hour, if that. And I plan to work probably about three to four days a week. And I will hold like no signs outside, no special lighting, nothing. It's completely private. It's not open to the public. And...
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Because the question comes down, special permit. A couple of questions that come up in just reviewing the application. There's some standards that we have to do, which I think you've addressed pretty well in your narrative here. One question I do have is the usual parking in the driveway. Is there a space for those folks to turn around when they leave?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't have to back out on the North Hampton streets?
No.
Take me concerned.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to try to do it. All right. You show operating hours between 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM. All within the restrictions of operating hours for the city?
Yes, except for on Saturday.
Except for on Saturdays, yes. So Saturday is where we went into the challenge.
I don't have to work on Saturdays.
Just have to ask you to close at 6:00.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, weekends is 10 to 6:00. Yeah. So that's, that's just the only requirement there.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I do just one clarification. If it's, it's not open to the public, so that means it's just by appointment only? People call you? Okay.
By appointment only, yes.
Okay.
I've been in the industry for 34 years, so I have already established.
Great, okay.
You have a following.
I have another question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members have any questions? We scrape forward? Okay. Do we need to read through all of the requirements, or do we feel confident that they can address with the progress that's been presented?
I feel that the ones you have, the 10.4 role, all addressed in there.
Yes. All right. The only, the only, the only thing that would change is definitely the hours on Saturday.
Absolutely. I would never work till 6 o'clock on a Saturday.
I'm always there. All right. So at this point, we will close the public hearing for the application from Michelle Finacy.
I think I had it public.
Oh, is there, I'm sorry. Is there anyone here we'd like to... You're all for it.
All for him here.
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Anybody online? Make sure we get everybody covered. Okay, so at this point, we'll close the public hearing for Michelle Finacy who is seeking a special permit. And someone making a, no, what is this? Motion.
Make a motion to approve the special permit for 84 North Hampton Street to open a major business. Major home occupation.
Sorry, one question. We said it was 8 to 9 to 7 for business hours?
Eight to seven. I'm just, because it's, it's not always going to be like that. I just wanted to give a little bit of variance.
Sorry.
It's okay.
With the conditions that adheres to the 10 to 6 operating hours on Saturday?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Motion's been made?
I second.
Not second. Any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have all hands up. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, so the motion's been made and passed for the approval of your application. This will then be written up over the next couple of days, and at which point it will be sent to City Hall for stamping and be reviewed through the 20-day appeal period, at which point you'll be notified, and then you go, you have to get, go to the Hampshire Registry of Deeds.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next application or applicant is Alexis Jose Abbott and Sean Abbott, applicants that are seeking a special permit to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming garage and install a smaller shed within a footprint in accordance with section 11.12 of the zoning ordinance. The 1.16 acre parcel is located at 21 Summer Street in an R5 zoning area. Step up and tell us what you'd like to do.
I'm Sean Abbott, owner of 21 Summer. They, we, we have a garage that's completely dilapidated, completely useless. Very, very, very close to the, our house, and we can't get like a wheelbarrow between the house and the garage. And we just want to replace that with a more useful shed where we can store our bicycles and a little bit of lawn equipment and actually make it useful.
Okay. So the shed that you're looking to build, so it's right on the property line, correct?
The current garages.
The current garages. So you're, you're looking to remove the current garage and basically turn it 90 degrees? Is that the plan?
No, we're keeping the same orientation.
Keeping the same orientation.
Yep.
But just make it small.
Like a foot smaller on the, on the north-south axis and a couple of three feet.
It's currently 19 by 12, and like he said, you can't even fit a wheelbarrow into our backyard because it's so close to the house. And it's so close to the fence line that we can't do any vegetation management in between the fence. So we wanted to shrink it.
All right. So John, we're seeing is it looks like a base cap has smaller structure or something. I don't know. But I think it's the larger footprint is what's there and the smaller is what's proposed.
Oh, okay. Okay. So the map isn't correct. Okay. No wonder I was confused.
The shed dimensions are in there too.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. I just, I was looking at the, what looked like a structure going one way and then the new structure going 90 degrees, and that's why I was confused. So, okay. So we're, we're cleaned up there. Thanks. All right, and so the new structure would be less, less non-compliant?
Hopefully.
Or more compliant?
Reduces the non-compliance.
All right.
You're gonna keep the back at the same spot as the current one, right?
So yeah.
I mean, maybe a few inches or something, but...
Not further back.
Not further back.
Not further back, not further in any direction.
Is, is the purpose of keeping it in the same just so you don't have to build new footings or foundations?
Smaller shed.
Yeah, I mean, it's, keeping it inside is just so we could make sure we could build something. We didn't want, we didn't want to have any, you know, we just need a shed and we didn't want to like run into any like zoning or, you know, we wanted to have as few zoning restrictions as possible, so.
Okay. Level area anyways.
Yeah. It's already level. There's a cement pad.
Right back in and drop it there.
Yep.
Does it touch any fences or anything like that?
It's currently three feet off of the neighbor's fence, and if we shrink it, then we'd have closer to five.
Okay.
Oh, good.
I can kind of crab walk through there right now. Walk through shoulders wide.
All right. Any further questions? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak concerning this? Online? Okay. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any motion you'd like to need?
I, I make a motion to approve the applicant's special permit to demolish an existing non-conforming garage and install a smaller shed within the same footprint.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, second, second. Tim was quick out of the draw there. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Two for two here tonight. This is good.
Thank you very much.
All right, so same deal. We will get it written up, get it posted for the appeal period, at which point you'll be notified to go ahead and go to the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds to register the...
Thank you so much.
Case number three, the estate, the estates at Stepler Crossing, Finacy seeking a variance to relieve the need to build a sidewalk as part of a multifamily housing in accordance with section 8.33 of the zoning ordinance. The 14.74 acre parcel is located at 71 Loudville Road and is in an R35 zoning district.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
Going pretty well.
I'm Erin Johnson. I'm the president of the HOA, and this is Joe Kelly, who is one of the developers in Loudville Condominiums LLC. So just to check, you do have, I gave you a drawing of where the sidewalk would go. It's got, it's a pink.
Yep.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure because I didn't bring an extra of that. I do have a couple of show and tell things for you if you don't mind.
Okay.
Helpful. So, you know, quickly summarizing, we are, we have 18 units, very small community. 17 of them are really on these two cul-de-sacs. Virtually no traffic, no reason for anyone anywhere to come into this community unless you're delivering something or you live there, you know. So it really isn't a place that gets trafficked. And so what I want to start with is, again, you don't have to do anything with this if you don't want. This is a, this is a soil sample. So if you want to, you might find this interesting just to put your fingers on this because this is...
My home has the same issue, so I will define it before.
It's like sand. Is anybody want to feel the soil?
There's plenty of sand in the city.
Your laptop here.
It's the city's joy.
It may see, I'm, I don't know. I'm not from around here. Maybe this is the way it is.
Part of the, the original glacial lake.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's very interesting because it's, I've never seen soil like that. Anyway, so because we have this highly erodible soil, it doesn't hold any water, and the setbacks in the front of the condos are quite small. So when we get this big street flooding, you know, the water, there's nothing to absorb it. The soil does not hold it. So it runs into the street. You have a picture of that. And this was on May 31st. It was like Memorial Day. So this is what it looked like. It doesn't, it perks eventually goes away, but it's kind of scary because it's so close to the foundation. And so we, and every time we get these deluges, which don't seem to be getting better with time, you know, the water is really coming up very close to the foundations, and that's kind of concerning for our future and for the stability. So between that and the erosion, there's a lot of sloping topography. When this rains come down, a lot of sand, because from that soil comes into the street, which isn't great for stormwater management, as you know, because that's going to end up in our pond and mess up the pipes. So it's not a great situation. Plus, you can just see gullies running through the yards when these rains come. So that's, that's one of our big problems. The other is that when you have sidewalks, you put in sidewalks because again, it's in some areas, less than 10 feet between the house and the road. So a four-foot wide sidewalk will eliminate as much as 40% of the green space in the smaller yards. Now you've taken away the little bit of green space that was going to absorb some of that water, and you've increased the stormwater and, you know, the stormwater runoff and the erosion. And meanwhile, we are, and I'll show you that in a minute, we are right surrounded by Hannan Brook Conservation Area, wetlands on the other side, and then conservation land where a stormwater pond is. But this is just to give you an idea. Now, I'm not a proper, I mean, I don't, I know this is not my business, drawing plans, but I took, I measured, we measured four feet, and four feet, I mean, it basically will take away the whole front yard in this particular one. So it really is kind of concerning what would happen. If you look up here at this one, which is, I'll come back this way, number, this is number seven, there isn't barely even four feet between the fire hydrant and the utility platform. And yet there is a sidewalk supposedly running through here. So it, so it's sort of difficult, doesn't make sense. And you combine that with the, you know, the flooding concern. So the bottom line is the insufficient setbacks, the soil condition, it does have the potential to create structural, ecological, and financial hardship for the community and the surrounding land. And none of the, and by the way, none of the homeowners want it. That is unanimous. Nobody wants it. We don't need it. So I wanted to show you one of the things that's very interesting. You know, I really do understand what the mission of sidewalks is, and this is a plan, and the pink stuff is, that is...
The camera's to your left if you're trying to show Josh.
The pink area is where, is all conservation designated land of one form or another. So I got this info from Cassie Taggart before she left. And so here is Hannan Brook in here. These are all wetlands. And so, so there's really nowhere to connect to. Here's the other thing. I mean, you can't, you're not going to build sidewalk through here. You, you, you can't build a sidewalk through here unless you cut through the wetlands. And over here is more conservation land and a stormwater pond. So if the idea of sidewalks, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but if the idea is connectivity, I don't know what the connectivity opportunity is here. We are sort of truly isolated or landlocked. So the need for a sidewalk to connect us to other neighborhoods doesn't exist really. And of course, one of the pieces of the sidewalk runs, runs to Loudville Road. And you can't walk on Loudville. I mean, you can if you're brave, but so it just sort of feels like in this situation that we really truly might be a legitimate exception to this need for sidewalks.
So I will ask, in the drawing you presented, you have some sidewalk in pink.
Right.
And there is another portion that is not in pink. That...
Joe, do you want to help me here in case like anything wrong? Okay, so here's what happened. It was changed. It used to be here, and now it's over here.
Okay.
So this is the house I was showing you that had the flooding.
Right.
And here's the one with the utility platform. This one is, starts at the road, goes back here. This one actually crosses some of the conservation land, but in any event, it's already approved and all that, so that's not up for discussion. But this, so this is now where it would go. This, for some reason, changed. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, the biggest thing I need to...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So just to kind of add to what Erin briefly summed up here, topography is a challenge. So when we were building the, kind of the west, southwest side on Conrad, the elevations were higher, so to put a sidewalk in, it would make it very difficult for the driveway, for people walking it. So it was a big safety concern. So we flipped it on the other side of the street. It was a very challenging site to develop. It's very tight. There's some topography challenges. The soil was probably the main challenge. And, and coming in that it's so tight, but it's a private way, it's a private condominium complex, as Erin said, it does not connect. There's no sidewalks on Loudville, at least in that five, six mile stretch, about halfway through to West Hampton. So, but those are the challenges we're dealing with between soil, topography, and shape. If you verify, if you go down that cul-de-sac, it does change a bit. So it's just really tight, and I think the concern from, you know, what's life after, what's life is like once we leave and have a managing company, is you got a safety concern. It's going to be very tight, and then in the wintertime, having to maintain those, then it becomes a safety concern. And obviously, stormwater is paramount and being able to absorb that. So it was just a tight site. We bought this site approved. I think if we were here from the beginning, we might have brought that up in the beginning, but we're kind of stuck with what was approved. So we're hoping that everyone's open-minded to that, you know, the possibility of foregoing that installation.
I, I, I just, oh, go ahead. Do you have a question?
I was just gonna ask, do we have, I didn't see the, the rules on sidewalks anywhere. Is there like a statute that we have available?
Yes, so, so what this is, it should be in your packet there, the 8.3, but specifically in there, 8.333 vehicular and pedestrian access requirements. Letter C, connecting walkways with tree belts shall be provided between structures and parking areas within the site shall be constructed in accordance with the standards set forth in the East Hampton subdivision regulations. And I remember we were looking, me and Ken were looking into the subdivision regulations. It speaks more to actual subdivisions where this is not a subdivision.
And there's no parking areas. Everybody has a garage.
But really, it's just that language there about the connecting walkway.
This isn't super relevant to us for sure.
Plus, we're a bunch of old people, and I mean, honestly, and you know, the whole sidewalk for old danger for old people thing is, is a little concerning. I mean, I'm 73. I don't know, in 10 years, do I want to be walking on an uneven sidewalk? No.
Well, if the water encroaches and you have a sidewalk and the water is spilling over the sidewalk, it would seem kind of dangerous too.
Yeah, I guess that's an issue, although I have to tell you, I wouldn't go outside if, you know, one of those deluges had on 83.
Sure. Josh, go ahead.
Yeah. So is this community built as a senior community, or do you think there will be children living there?
No, so there's no age restriction. The design, the price point, the model is really geared towards, you know, the baby boomer generation, but there's always restrictions on that.
The reason I ask is that if, I can imagine if there are kids, I'm sure a school bus will not come into, into the development. So these kids will be walking out to Loudville Road to catch a bus. I'm just a little concerned about the safety of the kids walking in the road. So, but maybe we lay my concerns.
Okay.
One question I do, this is, this is a private road?
Yeah.
Correct. And so snow maintenance is on the homeowners association to maintain?
Correct.
They've had some, the HOA has a professional management company, who is, was also strongly discouraging sidewalks from liability standpoint in winter. They said, because the second we get in there, we want to be there quickly, quickly after a storm. If that melts and there's ice, just the liability. They said, we can't come out every, you know, twice, two, two, three times a day to maintain. So that was, I understand that, an issue they've had, you know.
Okay.
I just wanted to say one other thing. We really value what's around us, the environmental, the beautiful stuff that's around us. I mean, these are wetlands, and the Hannan Brook Conservation Area is really, you know, in today's world, that's really a gem. And we don't want to, you know, here's a, I mean, the way we look at it is, here's one opportunity to have a little less impermeable cover that is going to contribute to the decline of our watersheds. And, you know, I know that sounds kind of environmental geekish and a little lofty, but it really is sort of the sentiment in the community that we would, we don't need it. but it really is sort of the sentiment in the community that we would, we don't need it. Um, we walk in the streets and nobody, there's one couple who has grandchildren that's around regularly and they're never out in the street. No one has any small children. There's two dogs. I mean, you know, this is a pretty small place. So, um, that is a valid concern, but, uh, it's not a house for children. These are one level, two bedroom, you know, it really wouldn't work for a family. So.
Okay. All right.
And then, um, just in case it would be helpful to the board, maybe I should have started with this a little bit, just how it came to us in the first place here. Um, because originally this conversation came up, you know, with all these concerns about sidewalk. And it was a matter of how to do that, because this was approved by the planning board. Um, and part of it, part of the requirements, sidewalks are required when looking to see, well, sidewalks might not make sense here. Is there a way that we can not do that through the planning board? Can the planning board make modifications to it? And in speaking with the chair of the planning board, it became clear that there's just nowhere in the ordinance to allow for any sort of relief from anything in this section. All that has to comply, so the only way relief could be granted would be through the zoning board of appeals. Um, and all the, the, the different reasons of, you know, wanting, maybe it not making sense. It's out Loudville. It's not gonna connect anywhere. These are all definite reasons that, you know, we, you might not want a sidewalk there that I certainly agree with. But ultimately, because it's a variance, the criteria that you're all looking at here today is this variance criteria that, uh, our ordinance actually breaks up kind of the state requirements into these four points. And it's really that question of if these folks, you feel that, uh, this application meets A, B, C, and D of 13.13, then you would be able to grant the variance.
Sorry. I had the same thinking as Josh, but I mean, this is not age restricted housing, so we're responsible for, you know, counting for that, that families and kids might live here. And again, the bus stop would be at the corner. I, I'm hesitant to see the entire sidewalk go. I think if there was a middle ground of having it basically from where the little crosswalk is there, cross steppler to the corner, that provides an opportunity for kids who might end up being in the neighborhood a year from now, 10 years from now, to walk safely through the corner or bus, not have to worry about UPS trucks and Amazon trucks flying around the corner and garbage trucks. Um, I drove to the site. I, I understand that, you know, that it's, it's small and, yeah, sidewalks might be overkill. I also, I feel I was kind of annoyed that I feel like a lot of the hardship here is self-created. It's a brand new development. It's like, what happened with the flooding? Like, why is there flooding on a brand new site? So I feel like we're supposed to consider, you know, the unit just at the site. I feel like a lot of these problems are self-created. So I don't know that I can just get rid of the sidewalk altogether just because it floods. Um, it seems like a bigger issue. But yeah, I mean, I, again, we're responsible for figuring out what this adheres to the, you know, these standards or not, and whether we can, you know, get rid of the sidewalks. And I would, there's enough money there to build the houses and put all the infrastructure in. And so at least some of the sidewalks should be built from my perspective for safety of potential residents down the road.
Okay.
Hey, comment on that, please go. Of course. And so, so drainage and everything is good over there. You know, we, we finished the basin and everything over there. It's such a tight site. So if we get these crazy storms that we've had, it will take some time to dissipate. I think it's got to clear, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's three days, uh, that basin's got to drain. So I mean, everything is done now. We can accommodate that. But you're kind of dealt with, you know, it's not like we had 14, 15 acres with no restrictions and we brought it in. It was a design flaw. We created our own hardship. We were stuck with the hand we dealt. And as we built it and, you know, as great as the engineers are until you get on there and you live there and you build it, these are the hardships that were dealt with. So we, we, we want to definitely be accommodating to, uh, to the board and follow, follow the guidelines here. But we also want to be realistic with, you know, people who are living there. And I know that, you know, they may come and go. Um, I mean, these are over $600,000, two bedroom ranches. So I can't say there'll never be any children there. Um, I'm always, you know, encouraging whoever wants to buy it to buy, the likelihood would be low. Uh, if there's a concern of having some sidewalk, you could have something from Stepler and Loudville and just down that straight shot. So I know you mentioned the crosswalk. We're probably talking about the same area, but it would just be that straight run. I really wouldn't get into jumping it. It would just be, you know, his Conrad Circle, the Stepler, very quiet, nice and big. But if you wanted someone when they hit the base of Stepler to the road, you know, we have a little more room in that section. Everywhere else is tight.
Yeah, I think that, that's.
More about site angle. So if you have trucks coming around the corner, kids are out of the street.
Do you mind if I approach to see if we're looking at the same thing?
Thank you.
I think we probably. Yeah, this is almost a straight shot. You know, it was just from here. Even though it's tight here, but up here is not as bad. So we could do something straight there if that, you know?
Yes. I mean, it, I will say that when I read the ordinance about the need for, you know, connecting sidewalk with the tree belt shall be provided between the structures and the parking areas. And there are no parking areas because it's, it's the style of development that it is. They're duplex units with, you know, single garage or, you know, single access to two garages.
Still parking areas.
There's still parking areas.
Because we do like APUs.
True.
Parking area can just be a, even just with the salon we had earlier, the parking areas.
Yep. And in that case, they provided a walkway from the house to the parking area. Right?
Yeah.
You can say that.
It's well parked. I mean, there are good sized driveways and all two car garages. I'm gonna be private, not connecting to any public area. You know, it's really just about residents that would live there versus outside traffic coming in.
I do like the idea of having the sidewalk from that intersection out.
Me too.
I think that that is a, it's a reasonable compromise. Uh, I, I agree with your concerns about, you know, that sidewalk right next to the house.
Yeah.
That it's poor design. I understand you had to put that building where you had to put it in order, because of wetlands and everything like that. And so it's, yeah, that's definitely a poor design. Um, but I think that if we could get a, you know, a sidewalk that came from the intersection of Conrad Circle on Stepler Crossing out to Loudville Road, I think that that would be a reasonable, is that unreasonable then? I believe so, yeah.
So just so I understand, you're just talking about the long stretch that goes to Loudville Road and then stops at number 18?
Uh, actually even before that.
Right here.
Here to here.
Okay. Yeah, just this part here. Yeah.
So we would have finished the crosswalk. We would just have a little.
That's all, that's all keep going.
Yes. Yeah. So we just have a, a, a T or a.
It would just die onto the road.
Die into the curve. Yeah.
Okay, so it'll just be here to here.
Yeah, here to here. And that way you can argue that you can get to Conrad, you can get to Stepler. You come off a Loudville on a sidewalk so that could, you know, appease safety concerns. Is that good with you?
I think there's gotta be something. I just.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. When the water comes up like that, I just feel like, isn't the, there's not gonna be a danger on the side? Like if there were a sidewalk close to these buildings, wouldn't that water become a problem with ice? And just encroaching on the sidewalk generally, it just seems like that'd be a problem if we're closer to the. Yeah, it's anyway, but I do think you need some sidewalk here, especially on that stretch. So I, I'm kind of in agreement with that.
So most space and least intrusive to do that stretch for not abutting any, we have the room. Beyond that, it, it does get tight. It's very tight.
There are wetlands right next to that stretch. So we're not, you know, the environmentalist in us is not crazy about that. Um, but, you know.
Hey, that was nice.
How, how often did this happen? That, that was bad. That was the Memorial Weekend, you may recall. Um, we've had several since then. They haven't lasted that long. That went on for hours. And so I would say we've had others that were similar and, but they, they, they stopped earlier. So they receded faster. But from a foundation standpoint, you, you know, the water still comes pretty close. And it's kind of, I mean, the driveways go away, you know, the, the water comes up the driveway. And it's a little disconcerting, you know? Um, we were all like, wow, what is happening here? You know? We didn't know that would happen. I don't think Joe knew what was happening, huh?
Yeah, when the ground freezes, it actually, what little soil that holds water goes away when the ground freezes and it gets cold. So it gets even worse in the winter sometimes. I had to deal with this. Um, my basement, it was awful. And then there were, I saw the soil. I saw how it was. I, I certainly sympathize with that. Do you guys have, uh, like basements in these homes?
We do. And there have, there have been, um, not, not met, not all of them are finished. But, um, some people have had wet basements and it's because of the soil.
I'd say French drains, uh, work pretty well. I can't give you that advice. I'm just saying we.
No, no. Well, and the, all the, all the downspouts are buried, um, and, and go into the storm pond. But, you know, when it does, when we get these deluges, where's it gonna go? And it just, you know, so there have been several people, um, who've had water in the basement.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else either in the Netherlands or, or here that would like to speak? He knows my kind of low, low seat pull there. So, um, all right. So do we, uh, at this point, do we want to close the hearing and someone, uh, make a, make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This one, I would recommend going through the four, uh, findings, just making sure that all the members agree.
Yeah.
If they do meet those four.
Right. Because it's, it's, we're, we're granting them some relief, not all.
Yes.
Right.
All right. Okay. So I guess I will, I will make them, let's make, let's go through the four, the, the four findings necessary for a variance.
Okay.
So you, and you can sit down if you want.
Okay, sure.
You don't need to keep standing there.
Should have that sheet in your bag. I got one.
Yeah.
There you go. If you're good.
I have one right here. All right. So in order to grant a variance in the state of Massachusetts, there's four distinct requirements that must be met. And they are non-negotiable. The variance must be with respect to a particular parcel of land or to an existing building on the land. So it is pertaining to this lot, which is lot, um,
Agenda.
Map 140, lot 29M. There must be a circumstance related to the soil conditions, shape or topography, especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. So if we look at that and we're trying to use the soil condition as the reason, um, I don't know if we can do that because that soil type is pretty distinct to East Hampton and the entire, uh, Pioneer Valley. Yeah, that would be my only concern in trying to use that one. I think we could use the shape and topography. Just because of the location of wetlands and everything like that, yeah, there is, it, it has to do with how these, this development was kind of wedged in there like a puzzle piece. So that kind of in order to meet the requirements?
And again, yeah, so R35 in general, um, you could say that's, that's certainly particular to this parcel and not all of R35.
That's true. Right. Uh, literal enforcement of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appeller. Well, if we put in that, it's a long term. If they put in the entire sidewalk, the long term would be pretty detrimental to the homeowners association. So there's your financial and the hardship is. It would exacerbate the flooding and, and people would be walking within inches of the house to the sidewalk.
Honor to cover the sidewalk.
Order to cover the sidewalk and into the house, creating a greater hardship for the owners. And desirable relief may be granted if there will be, will not be substantial detriment to the public good or nullification or substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of this ordinance. So we're, by compromising and installing the sidewalk from the intersection of Conrad Circle and Stepler Crossing to the intersection of Stepler Crossing and Loudville Road, it will then provide safe access to anyone who is to walk out of the development to Loudville Road. And would not generally, we'd still be providing walking access, a connecting walkway in the tree belt between structures and parking area, if you wanted to use that as the, the criteria.
To meet the intent of what we're trying.
The intent. Yes.
Safe, safe, uh, vehicular pedestrian movement is what this is called.
There you go. All right. So with that, those are the four decisive, four findings for the requirements for variance. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
We can vote on the findings or how's that work?
Nope, that's when you vote on the, the motion that you've, you've made the findings, now you make the motion. That, is that making the motion?
I don't know. Who's making the motion?
I think I don't know how it was supposed to work. We're trying to adapt it essentially to.
You'd say to just, uh, to approve the variance with the stated condition that the sidewalk, you know, will start, uh, will at least go from Conrad Circle to, um, Loudville Road.
Paying the big bucks.
There you go. All right, we got a motion made.
Second.
As for the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, one opposed. Okay. Motion still carries. And we, uh, as you've heard already, we will write it all up. You will be notified and there'll be a 20 day appeal period. And after which point, you know, you can go ahead and, and, um, notify the Hampshire Registry of Deeds that there's a variance on the property for the installation of sidewalk in that location.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings the conclusion of our three hearings for the evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 23rd, 2024.
That's back to a regular schedule.
I know.
I know. And.
I do on my Wednesdays.
I won't be here.
You have earned it after.
So, but I'm just saying that I, I'm gonna be out of town that day. Asheville, North Carolina. Feeding the family down there. Having a little family time. So.
For you.
Hoping, uh, for the next meeting, hopefully we'll have an update on, uh, the director at that spot. Nothing, no big information right now, just we are still conducting interviews. So hopefully, hopefully we'll have some news.
Okay.
Uh, our director, uh, our director of planning where, uh, since Jeff Bag left, we've been without a director. So, um, still moving forward, hopefully by October, we'll have some news. Um, and then yes, please keep an eye out for email.
Um, well, let's back up. Do we currently have any applicants for the 23rd meeting?
Uh, no. Currently we have nothing.
And when is the cutoff?
Uh, that would be very soon, about a week from now.
Okay. So everybody may be exempt.
Everybody may be exempt. And then, um, yeah, the only thing I can think of would be minutes, but if we have to get them just as part of the decision, I'll let you know. And we can even just do a, a virtual meeting where everybody, you know, reviews them ahead of time and then hold the vote. But if not, everybody might be off for October as well.
What's the November meeting date? What would that be? Cause of Thanksgiving and all that is that? I'm also aware that, I was just wondering ahead of time, because we don't have a meeting next time, then that would bring us to November.
20th on here. I'm pretty sure November, uh, I think it's really late. It's like, probably the 28th.
Yeah.
20th and then our December meeting is the 18th. Um, all right.
So can I just commend staff for, I'm sure busting your butts behind the scenes with everything you've been dealing with and helping applicants and dealing with lawyers and logistics and meetings. So don't let go unnoticed.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that. And I, I am also glad that everything is finally off, uh, off our plate as well. It's, it's a big relief. everything is finally off, uh, off our plate as well. It's, it's a big relief. Yes. So, but hey, at least they paid me to do it. So I thank you all for, uh, putting in the volunteer time.
We can't do this without your support. So.
Absolutely, Dylan.
So.
Thank you.
All right. What with that? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Opposed? Second it, come on. Second the motion to adjourn.
All right. Any opposed? So moved.